Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth, and welcome to our Portsmouth City Council meeting. I want to thank my colleagues and all who are present. We will begin with the invocation by Dr. Mark E. Poindexter, Westside Christian Church. I would ask that everyone stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Almighty and holy God, Creator of all that was, is, and ever shall be, we are grateful that you have revealed yourself to be a God of life, who wills only the best for all of your children and all of creation. We pray that this meeting tonight among our community's leadership and its citizens be consistent with that will, seeking only the best for all who live in Portsmouth. We pray for all who are here, that they listen to each other respectfully, recognizing your image in each other. We pray that each may speak their own understanding clearly so that others might be able to understand, and may all of them be knit together by the search for what is just and fair for all. Oh, God, leadership in any capacity is never easy. It comes with uncertainties and difficult decisions, yet we need leaders who are committed to giving their best for others. May those gathered this evening be such leaders. God, we pray for the violence which claims too many lives, both in our own city and all of Hampton Roads. We pray for it to stop. Too many lives cut short because of quick tempers and hair triggers. Bring peace, God, to the streets. And we pray for all those who protect the streets, our police officers, our firefighters, our first responders. May they know our gratitude for their work. Tonight, God, we gather in a place that is safe. We are fortunate for that. So tonight, we pray for the people of Ukraine, victims of an old man's quest for power. We pray for the families of all the soldiers, Ukrainian, Russian, and others, along with the families of all the civilians who have been killed by bullets and bombs. Oh, God, forgive our inhumanity to one another, both here and abroad. Have mercy, God, and bring peace to your people. It is in the spirit of all that is sacred and holy, the spirit of life, that we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, I want to thank you, Dr. Mark Poindexter, for being with us and delivering the prayer tonight. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes.
Present.
Mr. Battle.
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Dr. Whitaker.
Present.
Mr. Woodard.
Here.
Mayor Glover.
Here. Members of council, we have for our consideration the minutes of a called meeting on March 7, 2022, a called meeting on March 8, 22, a regular meeting on March 8, 22, a special called meeting on March 9, 2022, and a special called meeting on March 11, 2022. Is there any discussion on the minutes? If not, we are in need of a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Second. And will we be voting electronically?
Yes, sir. You will.
We will be voting electronically.
It's not on screen.
Okay. Okay. Can you just look at it real quick? We will have it to us. Okay. How did it go? Okay. Okay. Thank you. Councilman Moody, are you in support of the minutes?
Yes.
The minutes are adopted 7:0.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. And Madam Clerk, would you please read our speaker's statement?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rule require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. Our remarks shall be directed to the City Council as a body rather than to any particular member of City Council staff or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. We have now come to the item on our agenda, City Manager's Report, item 22-84. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to reappropriate unexpendable funds in the amount of $11,981,491 from the FY 2021 Portsmouth Public Schools Grant Fund budget to the FY 2022 Portsmouth Public Schools Grant Fund budget.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Motion to approve.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we are ready for the vote, and Madam Clerk, we'll be voting electronically.
Yes, sir. It didn't come up again. It didn't. Okay, I'm gonna call roll. Mr. -- we have no speakers. Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
We are now at item 22-85. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting developmental disability residential support funds in the amount of $21,600 and appropriating said funds in the FY 2022 Behavioral Healthcare Service Fund to support individuals diagnosed with intellectual or developmental disabilities.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Is there any discussion on this matter? Seeing none, we are ready for the vote. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Moody, can you see it on your screen? Okay. Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. Item 22-86. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering pertaining to this item? Or ordinance, it says ordinance.
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting community development block grant program income in the amount of $155,000 and appropriating said amount in the FY 2022 Community Planning and Development
Members of council, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
And we have one speaker for this item, and it is Ms. Donna Si. Ma'am, you have five minutes.
My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood in Cherslin. Agenda item 22-86 is an ordinance accepting community development block grant program money of $155,000 and appropriating the money to the -- for the year 2022 Community Planning and Development Program Fund. Where did this $155,000 come from? Why didn't the item submitted to the city manager have the following information in the report? There were -- there are two lots purchased by Pyramid Enterprises for 1216 and 1228 Spratley Street at a cost of $37,500 each. These two lots are zoned urban residential. There were two lots purchased by Pyramid Enterprises LLC, 51 Webster Avenue and 50 Linden Avenue, both for $40,000 apiece, which adds up to $80,000. Both of these lots are zoned historical residential. Was the Historical Preservation Commission notified about these purchases so that the Pyramid Enterprise LLC could make sure their company knows they will have to meet with the Historical Preservation Commission to plan the architecture of the homes being designed? Also, the company will need to meet with the Parkview Residence with its plans. Next time, when any director or deputy city manager or an elected submits a report to the city manager, please have all the facts included so there's no question on how the people's money is being spent. If you have any comments or questions, hold a town hall meeting to explain why the elected and appointed aren't upholding his or her oath of office to represent the people.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, I do have a question. The two companies, well, the company that was mentioned, were those properties purchased with community block grant funds?
Madam City Manager?
Yes.
Okay. And so, when will we get an update on the community block grant funds and who's receiving those? Because I know an issue was raised earlier about how citizens can benefit through mortgage assistance, I thought it was, some programs that they could benefit from through the community block grant program.
We are scheduled to present the CDBG funding annual plan during the budget process as we go forward. That will be one of the work sessions that we have to take you through each of the projects. We'll also show what historically those funds have been used for, and primarily, they have been used for recreation facilities as well as security lighting. But that doesn't negate the fact that we can look for different things.
Right. I thought there was some discussion about us trying to channel those funds more towards citizens who are in some type of need. But we, if those are some other avenues that we can use it for, that's something we can discuss. When will we have this update?
I don't have the budget schedule in front of me.
But it'll be before we vote on the final budget?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any additional discussion or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. Item 22-87. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance establishing a personal property tax relief percentage of 45% for calendar year 2022 personal property tax bills.
Thank you, ma'am. We are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Second. Council members, is there any discussion on this item?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Right. In our earlier meeting, it was mentioned that this applies to qualifying taxpayers. Just want to make sure, can you define that, qualifying taxpayers?
Well, since we have the expert in the meeting tonight, I would defer to the Commissioner of Revenue, Mr. Franklin Edmonds.
Mr. Commissioner, welcome.
Thank you.
You have the floor, sir.
Thank you very much. Dr. Whitaker, I appreciate your question. As you recall, the Virginia General Assembly in years past has tried to did a personal property tax relief for individuals that have first $25,000 on personal vehicles, not commercial. So that's the first phase of this two-pronged approach. I think there's some paperwork being sent down through each of you, but when we met with the city manager's office and her staff at the request of the council last time on May the 8th, you asked us to meet with them, we did, and so we believe that that 45% is acceptable for this particular budget year. You'll recall that that established by Division of Motor Vehicles information back in 2004, excuse me, 2004. So if we have an increase in vehicles in the city that qualify, then, of course, we're going to have to take that number down because we're only getting that 9.8 million from the state on an annual basis. I don't know if that answers your question, but it's the first 20,000 on personal vehicles, not commercial disqualifies. And there is a weight requirement also for larger trucks.
First 20 or 25?
20, I'm sorry, 20.
Okay. And also, will this accomplish our goal of not having an increase on personal property taxes that citizens will experience this year? Will it be the same as 2021?
Well, it's gonna be less as far as a percentage, but because of, we're only gonna get 9.8 million from the state, we didn't want to share that, pass that burden on to the city. So if we spend the 9.8 on qualifying vehicles and we still have time to, you know, through now, between now and February of 2023, then potentially, we could have to offset that from city revenues if the council adopts a larger percentage. But that was the goal in mind and not, you know, at this point, we're still in estimate. We've run some test numbers, and we're as close as we think we can get, but I promise you that number will change going forward, and we're as close to a moving target, if you will, as we can get with that percentage.
So the goal was to keep it at the same payment amount that
Yes, sir.
--the citizens were paying in 2021? So this doesn't accomplish that?
It does, based on our estimates, estimates, rather. We won't know till it's all actualized in the next fiscal year.
So what does that mean? So are citizens going to see an increase on their personal property tax or not?
Well--
Or vehicles?
The best way, Mr. Mayor, to answer that question is every taxpayer in the city of Portsmouth, 95% of our tax base, is going to see an increase. The two measures that you're considering tonight, one, personal property tax relief, and the second one being the ratio, 75-25%, and we've given you documentation tonight in the form of a letter and also in the form of a, it's a diagram that'll give you every, Hampton Roads locality and what action they've taken. And so we went in with the premise, working with the manager and the chief financial officer and the deputy manager with regards to finance, based on what you recommended last time, our goal was to come out keeping everyone same and no harm to anyone with the best numbers we have today, understanding that people will move, they will take their vehicles with them, some will move in, some will move out. And as we work through the process, we're only going to get $9.8 million from the state. Remember, in the years past, we had someone run for governor, they said we're going to eliminate the car tax. That was their first attempt at it. Portsmouth never realized 100%. And I know some of us were around back then, and we remember having that discussion. We hope we could get to 100%. Unfortunately, because of the high demand of the values this year, we've had to take a decrease in that particular one. But we hope, it is our hope and it's our thought that the projected ratio will offset what we've talked about based on the presentation we gave on the 8th, March the 8th.
So what is it that needs to be done to ensure that the citizens will see the same personal property tax on their vehicles that qualify that they did in 2021?
Well, what's gonna have to be done is to apply this for this year, and I'm not sure if future adjustments won't have to be made going forward because we've never been in this situation before. This is our best attempt, based on the estimates and the numbers that we've been monitoring. We've done everything we can up to this point. I mean, you can use whatever percentage you want to, it's just if the money runs out from the state in this category, you know, the personal property tax relief, then the city's gonna have to pick up that fund. So I mean, we can, I think it, last year was at 53%. It's been 54, it's been higher, but we're only going to get 9.8. And so this was our attempt, invite the manager and her team to comment as well, but this is our attempt to try to make it everybody as whole as possible. Of course, the city, you know, can spend additional funds if required, if we're required to do so, but it's, we're not gonna have totals until these funds will be in the CAFR, which are going to be audited, actual, you know, dollars will be reported the next fiscal year.
So when you say the city picks up the funds, I thought that in our previous discussion that the city has already budgeted for 2021, so there are no funds for the city to pick up. I'm not clear what you mean.
Well, okay, let me take one step back, Mr. Mayor, if I can. We're talking about two different things. One is a ratio, 75 to 25, that's one piece. The second piece is the personal property tax relief. So the state administers the personal property tax relief. That's what this item covers. The personal property tax relief, the city is only going to receive 9.8 million from the state. And that means if we spend 12 million, then we have to eat the rest of it, so to speak. I don't want to be coarse about it, but if we spend over 9.8, then the city's gonna be responsible for that relief.
Madam Manager? You have the floor.
Just to clarify a little bit, there are two separate actions that are occurring. One is this first action that you're voting on now, which sets the percentage reduction for those qualifying properties. The next one is the one that is the one that's going to keep everything whole and not increase, and that is the 25% reduction in the assessed value that we are proposing as a result of council's direction to keep everything level.
Right. So I knew you had mentioned earlier that these two items work together.
That's correct.
So, but I just want to make sure, and can I hear from the CFO on this as well?
Sure.
That what we raised as an issue as far as our citizens not receiving an increase on their personal property tax, that it will be the same as 2021, that these two items accomplish that?
To answer your question, it does accomplish that, and some people will see an even lower amount, simply because it's just shifted. You get 25% off of your assessed, and then instead of the 53, it's 45, but it does benefit the taxpayer, definitely. At the end of the day, they will see a reduction as long as it's under the 20% assessment.
Right. So we--
I mean, I'm sorry, $20,000 ceiling for assessment.
So for the citizens whose vehicles meet the criteria, we shouldn't be getting any emails or calls saying that my personal property tax is higher this year than 2021?
So I can't promise you that because somebody might buy a new car? And of course--
Well--
--there's so many anomalies today.
I'm talking about based on, you know, what their 2021 personal property tax was based on, all things--
Everything equal and fair.
Okay, all right. Because, as we know, the gas prices are greasy. We're trying to provide some relief. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead. City Manager and then Councilman Moody.
And I will just state that this was an in-depth meeting to discuss the estimates, to discuss, to ensure that we were meeting council's direction and knowing that this is one of the areas that we can send some relief to the citizens, given the fact that we are just coming out of a pandemic and we recognize gas prices and all of that. So we wanted to diligently try to work with all the various moving parts to ensure that we were meeting that objective.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir. And Councilmember Moody, he decided that he would withhold his comment this time, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will just say, you've seen a lot of localities that across Hampton Roads have to drop that amount, in large part because the state has never followed through with their second piece of that, where they, you know, they just said, and we're using data, and two years from now, it'll be 20 years old from 2004, so I just want to bring that to your attention as well. I mean, we'd love to give them 100%, but we just, in good conscience, I can't recommend that to you tonight.
Thank you, sir. And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. We've now come to item 22-88. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution that we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. A resolution to apply an assessment ratio to the value of certain automobiles and small trucks, as authorized by Code of Virginia 58.1-3503B for the calendar tax year beginning January 1, 2022.
Move for approval.
Second.
Is there any discussion amongst my members of council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering pertaining to this item? Item 21-22-89.
Yes, sir. A resolution approving a memorandum of agreement with the City of Chesapeake authorizing mutual limited occupancy rights of way and limited fiber strand exchange.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. We have now come to new business, item 22-90, boards and commissions, Vice Mayor Barnes, Dr. Whitaker. Do we have any appointments to bring forward for consideration?
No.
Thank you, sirs. Item 22-91, items submitted by council members. Councilmember Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is for our city manager. Is there any way we can get a report back on, I've seen some development going on by the Miller Group near our, you know, McLean, McLean. I don't think that we've been updated on what's going on over there, so is there any way for us to get a report back on that?
Sure. Okay.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
I just want to give a quick shout-out to Portsmouth Catholic Regional School. They had the eighth annual prayer breakfast on Tuesday, not Tuesday, it was last week, and I was able to attend, and I actually got a tour of the school. It was a great event. The Miss Henry class, they put on a show, they sang, danced, and the lights went out, and they kept going, and it was just a great event, and I was glad to be in attendance and thankful for the opportunity to be there.
Thank you, sir. I would like to mention at this time, I was informed late Sunday, early Monday, that we lost one of our former first citizens in the city of Portsmouth, a grand human being and a public servant, Mr. John Hatcher, who was very instrumental in working with the community at the Wesley Community Center. On behalf of City Council, I want to send our condolences to his family and wish them all Godspeed. Any other items from our colleagues on council? Report pending items, Ms. Jones, are there any pending items?
Sorry. On Monday, the 28th, we will be submitting the City Manager's budget for fiscal year '23. This will be a recorded event, and it will be published on the city's website at 5:00 PM Monday evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Lee. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
This is for the City Manager and the report back. Just had a question. And thank you for the breakdown of how the funds have been spent with the different organizations and individuals. There was an item, ODU Research Partnership, for $97,400. What is the nature of that relationship with ODU?
I will let the police chief, if he's prepared, to respond to that. If not, we can do a report back.
Welcome, Chief. You have the floor, sir.
Good evening, everyone. As part of the grant, we had to capture all the statistics around what we were doing and how we were doing it. The police department is not prepared to do that. So we partnered with ODU and their staff so they can track, record, and produce information for the grant itself. Because we have to report back to the U.S. government how we spent that money.
Yeah, okay.
They also record the outcomes of what we do.
Okay, all right. Which department is that?
I'm sorry, sorry, I didn't hear.
Which department is that at ODU? The manager, you know, the manager can-
I'm not sure.
Yeah, we can respond.
The reason I was asking is I know we were in a previous partnership with ODU and they were doing some research and had reported back. And I didn't know if this was part of that follow-up or same partnership.
It could be, but I know that specifically as a part of this grant, we had to refer to the data collection piece of that.
Right.
So I'm not sure if this is the same entity that was working before.
Okay.
But specifically to this grant, it required that data preparation.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, sir, thank you, ma'am. Do you have any more items, ma'am? Thank you, ma'am. We've now come to item 22-93, non-agenda speakers. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker's statement?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep. We ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the City Council as a body rather than to any particular member of City Council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. Our first speaker is Dr. Darlene Sparks Washington. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So my name is Darlene Sparks Washington. I'm the Executive Director at Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless. I reside in Old Town, Virginia, Old Town Portsmouth. Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor, City Council members, and Madam Jones, I just wanted to come and share a little bit of information about a little event that took place in Portsmouth on February the 26th, the coldest night of the year. I wanted to give you an overview of the event, but also to thank the city staff that we work with. So this small event that we did, the coldest night of the year, is a fundraiser. It's a 5K walk. And it's designed to raise awareness and funding for the homeless, the hurting, and the hungry in our communities. Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless was selected. This is the first time that the event has taken place in the United States. And seven locations in four states were chosen. So we had 28 teams. So that's 28 people who stepped up and said, I want to lead a team. We had 130-plus walkers, 28-plus volunteers, and we raised 146% of our goal. Our goal was to raise $20,000. And to date, we have raised $29,268. Of the seven locations in the United States, we were number two in the amount of money that we raised. We were second to Lynchburg. So Virginia showed up in a very positive way. Lynchburg raised $42,000. We would not have been able to do this without the support of the members of the city. And rarely do we get an opportunity to say thank you. And so I wanted to take this opportunity to do that. We started with the City Manager's office, and she set the tone for how we would be engaged. And I certainly appreciate that. I just want to say thank you to Ms. Stacy Porter in planning, Mr. Marvin Bates in parks and rec, Ms. Sharon Hargert and Dana Woodson in marketing and communications, Ms. Mary Watson in waste management, Ms. Nye, I hope I got that right, in risk management, Ms. Carolyn in property management, and Sergeant Hall's in Portsmouth Police Department. A lot of times, we raise money and people really don't know where it goes. So I wanted to share two stories with you. Three days ago, we had a gentleman who was a vet. He came to us. His wife died recently. He couldn't maintain home. He became homeless, and he went back to some old ways. In that, he overdosed. He came to us, and we're providing him with a warm place to sleep, a safe place, a hearty dinner meal, while we're getting him connected to Veteran Services so that he can get back on his feet. Another gentleman that we have, he is waiting for approval to enter into a substance abuse residential program. So the work that we do allows individuals to rebuild their lives. It's not just a shelter where people come and sleep and relax, but it's where people come, create a plan for their lives, and they are coached and managed through the execution of that plan. We got a chance to have our feedback today from the coldest night of the year organizers. And I want to share a few comments. These are comments that came from the citizens who participated. One was, so what made it so great? The community support, seeing so many people walking from all parts of the city and all demographics. Everyone working together for a united cause, super police support. So I just wanted the opportunity to share some good news in the city. Good things are happening. We appreciate the support of the city staff as well as council in our efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And I want to thank, on behalf of the City Council, I want to thank you and your team and all of those who participated. And as I publicly stated, I know you're going to hold me to it, we're going to double the money we raised last, next year. Thank you. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
For the City Manager, where are we on the one-stop expansion of the homeless facility?
We pulled a team together, and we're starting the design phase. We're working on the design phase now.
All right. Is that a CIP issue, or is there identified funding?
There's identified funding.
All right, all right. And I just want-
That's the funding from ARPA that you approved.
All right. And I want to say to Dr. Sparks Washington and to her staff, I want to thank them for the dedication and service that they have given over the years. And hopefully, we will have a one-stop shop there where we will be able to impact the lives of even more people. Really, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Althea Mies. Good evening, ma'am. You have five minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Portsmouth City Council. My name is Althea Mies. I'm the Chief Public Defender for the City of Portsmouth. Our office is located at One Guardian Court in the City of Portsmouth. I'm here tonight to talk to you about some of the issues that I've heard. You may recognize me because I've been coming to these meetings almost every week since I took my position. I wanted to hear what the citizens had to say and what was going on. And I've heard that there's concern. There is violence in the city. There is trouble in the city. It's not just Portsmouth. It's all over. I think this past weekend showed us that it's a problem that's much bigger than the city. But Portsmouth can be a leader in being part of that solution. One thing that Portsmouth has going for it, the citizens here care enough to come week after week and make their voices heard. The people in the city are willing to share and show their pain, and that is a good thing. Pain that is shown is pain that is seen, and that's pain that we can heal. That doesn't mean that it's simple. That doesn't mean that it's easy. But if we know we can do something about it. And what we need to do is we need to stop crime while also preventing crime. We need to do something about what's going on in the streets without walking back critical gains that the city has made in recent years, combating cycles of institutional racism and generational poverty. How do we do that? It's been said that we can't police our way out of crime. Who better to tell you about that than myself? Because I've seen it. I've worked on that. Increasing police presence without making sure that it is targeted runs the risk of affecting those most vulnerable in society, our clients, our people. We can provide resources. We can provide places for young people to go. It makes a difference. It matters. Because if the young people coming up in this city don't have the ability to make good choices, then they can't make good choices. And it's not as simple as saying, don't break the law. But they also have to believe in their future in order to choose that. In order to believe in their future, they have to see it. It has to be real. If they think that they're likely to have a negative interaction with a police officer and wind up dead, or wind up charged with a crime and not have the ability to defend themselves and get a fair trial and a fair second chance, even if they are guilty, then what difference does it make to offer them that hope for the future? They're not going to see it. They're not going to see past the end of their block. They're not going to see past the barrel of a gun, and that's where it's going to end up for them. So how does our office become part of the solution, which is what we want to do? If you increase enforcement, there has to be somebody out there making sure that it's targeted, making sure that only the right people are ending up in jail. Only the right people are ending up with felony records, records that prevent them from getting a better job, from going to school, from accessing all of the social services, because that can be disqualifying, too. The things that are designed to give people a leg up out of poverty and break these cycles. Our office is part of that picture. And we're here to tell you that that's what you're here to do. We have a dedicated, passionate team of professionals right down the street. Good evening. I'm here to take questions. I'm here to always provide input on anything you have going on that affects our possible clients. Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor. And ma'am, would you remain, please?
Yes, Attorney Mies, I want to thank you for your presentation and also for bringing some focus to the reality of crime in that you mentioned the issues of institutional racism and poverty, which so many times we try to overlook and just put it on personal choice. There are structures that are in place that have put people in cycles of poverty and have given them some options. And we haven't always looked at their choices. And so I want to thank you for bringing that perspective and what your office does. I think it is good that you are here today as a Chief Public Defender. And today, the nation witnessed a former federal public defender present herself, Katanji Brown Jackson, and the work that she and so many like you do on the behalf of those who are considered marginalized and less than. And so I want to thank you for that service and also thank you for bringing that consciousness to the position about that it's more than just personal choice, but it's some structures that we have to deal with. So when we talk about fully funding education, and we have citizens who come in here and try to tell us that we should cut funding in education, it lets you know they don't understand poverty. And when we start talking about minority contracting and trying to provide jobs, it lets you know that they don't understand poverty. And I want to thank you for that perspective that you brought today.
Thank you, Councilman Whitaker. I think it's worth noting that a lot of those cycles can happen if we are imprisoning such a greater proportion of our adult population than almost any other country in the world. They have families, they have children at home. And we know, we know that the impact on those children left behind are so great. And that does get passed down every single time.
Vice Mayor Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
Well, first, I want to say, Dr. Whitaker said a lot of what I was going to say. But I did want to say that I appreciate the work that you guys do in the community. I've seen it myself, and I've actually worked with you guys on some things. But to go back to some of the things you said, it's not just that simple of just telling a person, don't commit a crime or don't do something. Sometimes the things that they have in front of them hurts them to the point where they feel they have to do something. They only have a couple of choices. And they feel like they have to maybe make money or go to jail. And sometimes both of the choices lead to going to jail. So I really appreciate what you said, and I appreciate the work that you guys do. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Attorney Mies, thank you for coming to us, especially on this last couple, few days of Women's History Month. It's good for us to be able to see women as leaders and recognizing what we need to do in our cities and in our communities to change the future on how we look at crime and how we look at life for people. Do you have some staff, some team members here with you today?
I did. We do, we rolled deep here today. I would first point out the second-in-command of my office, Janita Costin, right up here. We also have Senior Assistant Public Defender Jonathan O'Connor. We have Senior Assistant Public Defender Ryan Azelon. Senior Assistant Public Defender Lauren Gilchrist. And Assistant Public Defender Tom Nardi.
Thank you all for your visionary leadership. And thank you for visiting us and offering us another avenue to consider when we're looking at solutions for eradicating crime in our city.
Of course. And, you know, I care very deeply about the city. I've worked here many years, and I'm always interested in providing input from the defense perspective, from the poverty and social justice perspective of what our office does. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Barry Randall. Barry Randall. Our next speaker is Cedric Crado. Mr. Crado. Neither of those gentlemen are present. And I do not see any other matters before us as a council. Therefore, that concludes and adjourns our meeting for this evening.